Yeah, and they also approved the certified survey map to split the property behind the, for the Wisconsin Partnership for Housing Development off the Main Street down there. And they also approved the land behind the Stoughton Hospital, which looking to use for a bike trail in the future. So, I know they approved some things that passed through here recently. That's all I had from the council.
Okay, thank you very much. And then we have a staff report.
Containing your packet is the monthly report giving you a summary of some of the activities that have, in permitting history that's been going through our office. You can see, single-family permits are about consistent with the 2017 numbers. New single-family starts year-to-date, we've had thirteen this year by the end of the last month, and we had fourteen last year at the same time. But you can see the residential remodel and repair actually above from where we were last year, and actually consistently, most of the building permit trends are very similar to last year.
Any questions about the staff report? Here are none. We have item number five is a request by Tom Four of Coons Country Buick, GMC of Stoughton, 1423 U.S. Highway 51, to amend the zoning ordinance to allow pennant-type signs to be placed on private light poles in the planned business district. It looks like the first item is, do we want to do some history or go right into the public hearing?
Yeah, really, the site that is on the screen is the site that's precipitated the request here. The signs were placed and we observed them, and they're not consistent with what the ordinance says at this point. The property owners have indicated a desire to try to have the ordinance changed. There is a public hearing tonight for that effect. There's a couple of different types of signs here actually on the site, some of which are not specifically, these are ones that aren't even fastened to light poles, but they're kind of the freestanding. These other ones are the ones that are attached to the light poles. So, there's a public hearing at first, and then there's a resolution, or an ordinance actually, to consider related to the request.
Any questions by commissioners before we go into the public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll close the regular meeting, and then we'll reopen for the public hearing. And I don't have anyone signed up to speak.
I'm Tim Cunis.
Come right up to the microphone there and maybe state your name and address for the record.
I'm Tim Cunis, from 629 South Woodpine Drive in Elkhorn, Wisconsin. Tom Four is on his way. He's the one who filed the ordinance, but I just want to make sure I was here.
All right. And feel free to, if you have any thoughts, or you want to share with us what's going on.
Well, I, it, part of our business, we have sixteen different dealerships located throughout Wisconsin and Illinois. That's always been part of our image is the signage, so we were hoping to be able to continue that. Like I said, that's kind of standard in our business, but we want to obviously do what we can to become a part here in Stoughton, and obviously be by the rules, but.
Okay. Anything else you want to add, or, I mean, if we're still having a conversation when the other gentleman gets here?
Yeah, he might be a little bit more prepared than I was. He just was running a little bit late.
Okay. What time are you anticipating?
He said his GPS told him six eighteen, and he's hoping that was gonna shave down, so.
Okay. All right. What we can do is, we can either continue on this, or we can skip and come back to it. What would the commissioners like to do?
I think it makes sense to skip and come back to it.
Okay, so we'll close the public.
Actually, I think you just recess it. If you close it, then the other gentleman wouldn't be able to speak as part of the public hearing, but I think if you recess, it allows for additional testimony.
Do we need a motion to that effect?
I think you should.
Yeah, make a motion to recess and continue on with business.
Okay, so there's a motion to recess by Jensen?
Second.
Second by Bartlett. Any comments or questions about that? All in favor of the recess? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so we'll pick it up when he gets here.
Thank you so much.
We'll go through some other business. Sure.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll go to item number six, which is a request by Matt Adams for design approval for an awning replacement within the downtown design overlay zoning district at 143 East Main Street.
Just a quick synopsis of the materials. Of course, in the packet, you'll see the picture that's here, as well as other materials related to the request. But at your table, you will note, there is a section from the zoning code that we, that we pulled out of the code, just so you're familiar with it. Chapter 78517 is actually a chapter, we've been talking about, the downtown design overlay guidelines. The current regulations under parent six related to awnings, and also six I, also six J exterior colors. So, you may want to consider those standards as you consider their request.
Anybody have any thoughts or questions, or want to make a motion or do anything? Okay, Commissioner?
Barman, thank you. I have a thought and I have a question as well. My initial thought is that I don't think these particular colors would be considered complimentary or compatible with the, not only the color scheme of the rest of the building in question with the brick and the upper awnings and the lower facade, but also is really not necessarily complimentary, compatible with the adjacent buildings left and right either. My question is, when an awning is used in this way, you know, more than just the lower horizontal band at the bottom of the awning, that's where it says, "We buy gold," when it's more than that, when you have the lettering on the, to the full extent of the awning, my guess is that this has to fulfill the square footage requirements for signage on the front of the building, correct? Is this considered to be a sign in terms of the allowable square footage? Because it would seem to me that this particular square footage might exceed if this was just considered to be a flush-mounted sign, for example?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think, it would fall under the sign regulations, but I don't think it would count the whole awning. It would count the letters individually, so it wouldn't be that large of a sign per se.
See, I think that might be a concern within the wording of the code. It's something else that we're looking at as another function of the planning commission, because if someone, for example, had come with the proposal of putting a flush-mounted sign of those dimensions up on the upper facade, or even the lower facade, the whole sign square footage would have been included, not just the letters. It would have been the full sign panel. And to me, with an awning of this scope, I would think that it would be the full extent of at least the, the, not necessarily because you got the sloping square footage, but it would be the resulting vertical square footage that you might want to include as part of your signed square footage. Because, and the reason for this is, and this is my, I guess a third comment, when we look at signage within an historic commercial district and within downtown, the signage typically is intended to speak to pedestrians who are walking the street. It's not intended to shout at automobile traffic, for example, going past. And this is of a size and a scale that you could see this blocks away. It's more of a sign that would be designed for a highway commercial kind of setting. And for me, that puts this at much, much larger kind of business community. I'm all for, I'm all for business communication, but I think this is just the wrong scale.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Seltzer?
Thank you, Mayor. I totally agree with what's being said. It's strikingly inappropriate, and I don't know the right, I don't know the right things to pursue to explain this, but when you put this signage against the general city, I guess, atmosphere of the buildings and everything that's there, it covers a good deal of the, and this may get into the historic question unfortunately, but it covers a good deal of the architecture of that frontage, and it just seems to be, and I'm happy to be corrected, but glaringly out of proportion and appropriateness to our Main Street. And I don't know the technical things that come behind that, but it just, it doesn't seem like a very good signage at all to keep up the Main Street appearance that's important to the city.
Does she have a comment?
Yeah, he's merely, he's using the same brackets. All he's doing is replacing the cloth. I mean, I understand the colors, and maybe we need to look at the size of the lettering. I understand that. We might have to look into that a little farther, but he's really just replacing the cloth, so he's not expanding on what's already there. I think more of a question is, there's existing kind of burgundy-type awnings up above, and this obviously wouldn't match that. And the blue kind of goes against what the downtown design overlay zoning district says. So, you may want to look at, look at the colors and recommend a different color.
Look at that.
Yeah, didn't I have one?
Just a good look at it.
I think I had one in the packet, I thought.
Yeah, there is one in the packet.
Yeah, there's one in the packet, too.
Quill and brush, that's it.
So, it's pretty much the same dimension.
You can see the size of the, of the awning and the lettering already. It's pretty, pretty large.
It is, but we're talking about changing the awning and changing the font and changing the text. And so, to me, this is an opportunity for the plant commission to evaluate whether even today, we would have approved the quill and brush gallery awning. And again, I understand that the ordinance, as currently worded, probably doesn't, the way it sounds, does not consider the awning messaging to be a sign. It's, so it falls within awning regulations and not sign regulations. But as I think we look at revising the downtown sign or design guidelines, this triggers for me that we want to make sure, we want to, might want to address or clarify that, because it's really functioning as a sign as much as an awning. But I guess I would, I would move that we deny the proposal at this point, just simply based on the color choices, because as you said, it is a primary blue color, which according to the ordinance currently, shall not be permitted. It also, according to awning, the awning statute, it is really not compatible or complimentary to the color scheme of the rest of the building.
Second?
Okay, so there's a motion by Barman, and a second by Seltzer. Any comments, questions, or other person, Jensen?
Being in the downtown overlay, does this not have to go to landmarks as well?
No.
It's not a local landmark?
It's not a local landmark building.
Okay.
It's not governed by the landmarks commission.
It's contributing though, right?
It doesn't matter. If it's not a landmark building, it's not, it's not in a local district. It's not governed by them.
I still gotta get that all straight in my head.
Yep. Nope, just, it's pointing to clarification. It's important that we all understand that as we talk about the different variations.
Okay, any other question? So, as I understand it, with the motion, you're basing it on, it would be on the ordinance here, J1 and J4, is that what you're looking at, Mr. Barman?
I give an I.
Yeah, 78517I under awnings, as well as, yes, J, item one, in terms of the primary blue color.
Okay.
And certainly, as, if we were to make a recommendation, just to assist the business owner, certainly something that was a little bit more earth toned, something that was a little bit more compatible and complimentary with the color scheme of the rest of the building, I think would, I'd be more open to, again, not knowing what the logo color scheme colors of the business, which is, you know, this is where kind of we run into a little bit of a challenge, because their logo colors may be blue, which is probably why they chose these colors.
Yeah, and the reason I mentioned four is because the color schemes, I don't consider them consistent. It's hard to tell on the picture here, but the one in the packet, you'll see the awnings on the second floor are the same color as the quill and brush ones.
Yes.
So.
Four would be fine as well, sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we can give proper feedback back to the applicant.
That's fair.
Okay. Anything else? So, the motion was to deny, and usually, well, we usually don't make motions in the, they're usually in the affirmative, aren't they?
Well, the resolution's written to recommend approval, or to approve it. If you deny the resolution, if you don't pass the resolution, then it would fail.
Okay. Are you okay with that? Okay, so everyone understand that?
Do we have, if I can?
Go ahead.
... for a second. As far as the awning actually being used as signage, still that question of, you know, with the, I'm looking at the quill and brush thing, but with the Viking Golden Pawn type and font and that scale, we, do we not really have anything necessarily? Because it just doesn't really seem to, as far as everything else there, it's like at the ends of the, what Todd was talking about, at the end of, I'm not even sure what you call the piece that hangs down at the awning, that, you know?
The balance, maybe?
The balance. You know, that seems to be consistent where other buildings, other businesses have, that's where they have their advertising piece, not actually taking up, even though I know that Quill and Brush had it there. But, as was noted, I'm, I wouldn't be comfortable with Quill and Brush, I'm sure that's been there quite a long time, but if they had come today and said, "This is what we want to do," I would have said, "Well, that doesn't fit. That's too big." You know, go with something on the balance like the other businesses, and that fits. So, I'm not sure of what my point is exactly, but as far as offering guidance to the property owner, or looking at, I mean, do we have anything that says, "Yeah, it should really just not be," do we have anything ordinance, regulation-wise, that says?
There is something on the books. I'm not sure exactly what it says specifically without digging into the ordinance, but there is some language in the sign code related to awnings and.
Yeah, because the only thing I see here says, you know, "Signage applied to awnings shall be simple and durable."
Yeah.
We can check into that, and as we provide feedback to the applicant.
That might help, so somebody's not like, saying, "Well, I did this, but, you know, now you guys are hitting me with this," just to like, give them some.
Sure.
Help so that they're not spinning their wheels.
Okay. So, the motion is, Planning Director Schiele said is written in the affirmative. So, and the recommendation is to deny, so.
Resolution?
Yeah, pardon me?
Denying the resolution?
Yeah, denying the resolution. So, if you're voting yes, you're actually approving it, and if you're voting no, you're denying it. Is that correct?
Sure. Just as long as everybody's on the same page. You're either voting for the resolution, or you're not. And if you're not, you're not supporting the.
Right.
Installation of it as presented.
Just so I understand the process, if no one makes a motion to approve the resolution, does it just die on the vine, and we just move on, or?
Generally, they try to have an action.
Okay.
I think it's recommended to have an action.
That's probably the best way to give the applicant the feedback. Go ahead, other person, Jensen.
Yeah, I think the best way to do it here is to save the confusion, is to just not, instead of making the motion, or have Todd rescind his motion, and then we can simply vote on it, up or down.
Okay. So, what he's suggesting is he just withdraw the motion, and just go with the resolution, and then just vote. In your case, you'd be voting against it.
All right. So, I will withdraw my motion, then.
And then we would need to have a motion for the resolution.
To approve it.
To approve it.
Point of order there. If we don't have such a motion, then I think it would just die, rather than have it and vote on it. If nobody's here willing to say, I'm not sure we want to say, have somebody here say, "Yes, let's make this motion just to have it voted down." That's not what we want, is it?
Oh, it's what we typically do. We do that a lot on liquor license applications when, because the Roberts Rules typically tell you to vote on, you know, something in the affirmative, or.
To move it forward, I'd make the motion to approve.
Okay. So, there's a motion to approve the resolution by Jensen, and was there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Bartlett. So, if you're gonna support the awning, you're gonna vote aye, and if you're gonna vote to deny the awning, vote no. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, so that resolution fails, and then we'll provide the applicant with the feedback, and more likely, we'll see something come back here. Are we here? Okay, so, would you like to go back to the public hearing?
Yes, I'm motion to vote to, why would you do that?
Come back from the recess, whatever term that is. All right, so there's the motion by Jensen to resume the public hearing. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Bartlett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Okay, so the public hearing is still open. You can come on up and introduce yourself, and give us your address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Tom Four. The business address is gonna be 14, actually, we have a couple different addresses, so we're gonna use the 1423 Highway 51 address. And what we're looking for is just a little bit of an amendment to the current ordinance to allow for pennants, pennant flags to be hung on our current light poles as they used to be allowed to, I guess, from what I'm understanding, from the previous owners of the property. They were allowed until that particular location was annexed into the, into the city area. So, just looking to have that amended as well. The hardware is already all existing. We just simply put up our own flags, and then we're notified that they were not compliant, so.
Okay.
Is the request to also include the freestanding banner signs that you have on the site? Because these also are not.
Correct, yes.
Because those are not allowed either.
Okay. Yeah, then we would want those to be included as well, yes.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No, I don't think so. It's really, what we're trying to do is, obviously, draw attention from Highway 51 there, as we are kind of on a little bit of a side street there to get people to know to turn where they're coming from. Obviously, 51 is a busy, a busy street, and we want to encourage business coming into the Stoughton area here, and help it kind of meet our corporate image that we have between our 17 stores, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else here to speak at the public hearing regarding this matter? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll reopen for a possible recommendation to the council. Anybody have any questions or thoughts or motions they'd like to make? Other person, Seltzer?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, unless I hear differently, or am convinced differently, I would be opposed to this. I understand the gentleman saying that this is their common business policy, or the way they run a site, which is perfectly reasonable to me. On the other hand, Stoughton is not a standard community. The idea of suddenly, not suddenly, I don't want to speak subjectively here, the idea of having a change where fluttering flags and that are on one of our major streets be allowed when originally, or apparently currently they are not allowed, would be a mistake. We are not Fitchburg or Verona. We're not a big city. I think they can do perfectly well with, going back to the signage we've been talking about previously, with the signage that fits within our restrictions. And I would recommend that we stay with our standards, or at the very least, I hate to think of it, but do more research. But I, I think we have a good community, a good city, a good Main Street. We have a reputation as a historic city. I don't think these flags belong on this street, and don't, don't wish to be overly critical, but don't think, even though it's what that company particularly does, it should be done here.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? There is a resolution in here. Once again, it's, you know, it would be, you know, for the planning commission to recommend approval, so somebody could make the recommendation, and then we can go from there.
I have a, thank you. A question and a comment. My question is for staff, in the sense that, I mean, this is intended to apply to the plan, the planned business district. And I guess it would help me, since I didn't have a chance to go back and look at the comp plan, is this a, just a specific geography that's in this part of the city, or is it for the zoning class of planned business districts? And it would apply throughout the city for all planned business districts, or is it just for this particular, an area just particular to the stretch of the highway?
All properties own planned business.
All properties throughout the city's own planned business.
Now, remember, downtown is not a planned business district.
Yes.
This area is.
If I leave my property, the old sicko, that's a planned business district zoning class, so it comes almost to the downtown.
Bits and pieces, yeah.
Yeah.
Should be through there.
So, my comment is, is I think it's, it would be, it not behoove the planning commission to jump into a change of the language of an ordinance like this that applies to a lot of different parts of the city for one particular property. I'm also concerned that there really is no, the way the proposed wording suggests, there is really no limits to, in terms of square footage, to the number of, or in terms of quantity, as long as, in the wording here, as long as the pennants advertise a uniform message. It sounds like it's written that you could have as many pennants, and it could encompass as much square footage as, I mean, unlimited. And I think that's a dangerous path to go down as well. And I'm just trying to, you know, picture all planned business properties throughout the city starting to go this direction, and I don't think that's what we're looking for.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments, or motions to make, or if we don't make a motion, then nothing would happen with it?
Well, you still want a motion to go to council, right? Recommendation to council?
I would think that would be the best.
So, again, same thing.
Okay.
So, make the motion to approve.
Okay, so then the motion would be to approve the recommendation to make the change to the city council. Would, there be a second?
Second.
All right, so a motion by Jensen, and a second by Bartlett. Any questions or comments on that? So, be just like the last one, if you vote, and if you're voting to allow it, you would vote yes, and if you wanted to deny the change, then you would vote no. All in favor? Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment, that I hold a similar opinion to what Tom and Todd have said. I just think it's, it opens the door too far. I really don't want to see flags flying all the way down Highway 51, down to our Main Street. It's, it just doesn't, you know, I know that what they're trying to do, and I, you know, I understand that, and, but if they have it, everybody else is gonna want to do the same thing, and I just don't want to see flags all the way down that corridor.
Okay. So, I'll just echo a little comment. See, I agree with that. I really don't mind the way they're set up now. It doesn't look that bad. I live in the district. I haven't heard any complaints, and a lot of people didn't even really notice the flags that I've talked to, even though they're up. So, I don't think it's a big distraction, but I am concerned about the amount of flags and carrying that all the way downtown. The unintended consequences, which is might bring too much distraction, too many flags up and down Main Street of all different colors, shapes, sizes. The unintended consequences, which is might bring too much distraction, too many flags up and down Main Street of all different colors, shapes, sizes. That's why I'm not gonna support it, but.
Okay. All right, so all in favor, say aye. And all opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so that motion fails, and then...
That's a recommendation.
That recommendation fails, yeah, that would, would go to council the same way. So there is an opportunity to come to city council, and that would be on the June twenty-sixth city council agenda. And we meet, the council meets in this room at seven o'clock, so you could certainly come in, and we have a public comment period at the beginning of the meeting, and you would have three minutes to express your case if you so desire. Okay, thank you. Okay, item number seven is, we have a request from A.J. Arnett of Norseview Holdings LLC for certified survey map and rezoning approval for the property located at the southeast corner of North Page Street and County Highway B. And this was something that was tabled on July eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, which I can't remember that far back, I wasn't on here, and maybe, maybe Rodney can give us a little bit of history on this. It looks like we're looking for a recommendation to the council for the CSM and the rezoning.
Developer's here as well, so certainly he can be inquired with the questions. This represents the certified survey map that was submitted back in two thousand and sixteen. There was interest in trying to have these existing five parcels within the seventh addition of Norseview Heights combined with Lot One, which is an unplatted parcel of land, to create an area for a number of duplex buildings to be built into a planned development or group development layout. At that time, there was a number of questions that were raised by the planning commissioners, and, and along with the developer that night, they, they expressed interest in tabling that item until additional or more current information became available. In May, we received... Amongst other things, we received the certified survey map as shown here. Again, attempting to have the five parcels of land that are existing in the seventh addition to Norseview Heights along this area. You'll note that there, this is now proposed to be a two-lot CSM. This lot is actually under construction. There's a single-family house that's allowed to be constructed here, and, and that's currently under construction. So his renewed request, or his new request, is again to rezone the balance of Lot One to TR six with anticipation of producing a conditional use application to create a group development of duplexes on the, on the remainder, the remaining area of Lot One. This would still remain SR four, which is a single-family residential four district. On here, there's a, there's a number of things that, that will need to be addressed, but he shows a twenty-foot strip to be dedicated to the public along this area, and he shows an area where it's anticipated that Marie Drive, which is not improved in this section, would at least be vacated for a portion of this area. So, in a quick summary, that's, that's the, that's the certified survey map aspect of it. Before you tonight, in your, at your tables, are two different recommended documents that staff's generated. We've been in consultation with a city attorney in trying to review this somewhat quickly, and procedurally, there's been some question as to whether this can or can't be done in a certified survey map world. We believe that it can be, but there are still some procedural, some issues that need to be remedied as part of this process that seems like there needs to be some more time to correct those items, and I'll just highlight a few of them. One of them is dealing with this, this language related to the vacated Marie Drive, solidifying what that means has to be dealt with, and I don't think, we don't believe that just by including that on a CSM, that can be effectuated by just having that placed on the CSM. The area of this strip dedicated for public purpose will probably need to be identified by a separate parcel or outlot. And then there's a number of easements that would be vacated as a part of this conversion of these parcels of land to this larger lot. Along these parcels, there's, there's documented easements within that plot that have to go through a vacation process. So, with that in, in mind, I'd like to just walk through the resolution that is, is at your place tonight. The one that really talks about the CSM, so it's titled Resolution of the Common Council. Again, this is a recommendation body for this action to the common council. The first whereas clause talks about when the original certified survey map was submitted, and when the, the commission looked at it back in two thousand and sixteen. Tabling that action down to the fourth whereas clause, kind of recapping that in May nineteenth, we received the two-lot CSM that's shown on this, on the screen. And based on our belief, as submitted strictly, it can't be approved because of some of the easements, the right-of-way and the public land dedication issues that would have to be worked through. However, this goes on to offer some potential conditions that will allow it to, to move forward. The last whereas clause in the front page just talks about how the city council and planning commission believe that after their review and these conditions are met, it would be, bring those into compliance. So, really, looking at the recitals on page two is really trying to talk about the substance of the things that we seem, that seem appropriate to move this through with a condition of approval. A development agreement to be put together and approved by the city and the developer that outlines any required public improvements, outlines how easements are addressed, any parkland dedication or stormwater management requirements would get articulated in such an agreement. The procedural requirements are reviewed and satisfied, including the addition and removal of easements, vacation of public rights away, dedication of public land, environmental assessment, any of those things that would need to be done. City attorney worked late last week to try to resolve in his mind some of these procedural things, was unable to, to completely do that, and is out of the office this week, so we certainly can't have those things completed immediately. We further recommend that direct access to County Highway B not be allowed from parcel one. We think that the access to this larger parcel is best accomplished by access to Page Street corridor. We further, and we'll talk about this as well, but the development plan for Lot One, it seems integral to the, the layout and the configuration of Lot One. We think that that should be part of the, the condition of approval of the CSM. So this statement talks about before the city would sign the CSM, the developer would reimburse the city for all expenses incurred by the city in connection with its review and processing of the CSM and the development of the lands within the CSM. Such reimbursement shall include all fees related to legal, planning, engineering, and outside consultants. That's similar language than what we've found in other, other approvals, such as Kettle Park West and CSMs related to that. Item six, plans and specifications for the construction of all public improvements needed to serve, and there may not be any, but if there are any, to serve the CSM should be approved by the city before the city would sign the CSM. And among other things, construction plans would need to show how street trees and their location and size and species would be incorporated. All easements, the city utilities identifies as necessary would need to be added to the CSM if there are any. So, those are a number of things that we think are appropriate. In essence, it's a conditional approval outlining those things that would have to yet be met. This item also talks about the, the rezoning. The second document at your table tonight is the, the draft ordinance for the rezoning to the TR six. The TR six district is a two-family residential district, but by conditional use, it allows for group developments of two-family units. And in essence, you saw in your packet what the preliminary concept by the developer is to install thirteen such dup, two-family units onto this parcel of land. We think that it's gonna be necessary to work through the particulars of that, and, and your next item on your agenda is really to talk with the developer about issues you may see related to that. But this ordinance would recommend rezoning this area to the TR six to allow for that. But it would be a conditional approval to allow for the group development or planned development scenario to be hashed out and worked through before it would become effective. And in addition to that, it ties it to the CSM being, the, the conditions of the CSM being satisfied at the same time. So those are, those are the substantive things, certainly able to try to answer questions, and, and the developer's here to discuss them as well if, if you so choose.
All the person, Jensen?
Quick question for you, Rodney. That ten-foot wide one-way street, is that acceptable? I mean, we...
You know, I certainly think we need to talk about the, the layout of the, the proposed group development. Your concern is one that might be shared by the emergency services. It's not a public street. It's proposed to be a private, private roadway within this district. But certainly, you know, access, parking, flow are things that are legitimate issues to talk about and communicate with the developer and learn more about.
Anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, Mr. Arnett's here. Did you have anything you want to come up and talk about?
I've got all sorts of things.
All right, all good, right?
I'm A.J. Arnett with Norseview Holdings here, and I guess we could start either with the CSM, or we could start with the rezone portion. But I think maybe it's, I kind of look at it like building a pizza. We gotta get the sauce down first, then we figure out how to slice it up, and the CSM's the way you slice it. You know, and we want to put the toppings on and everything here. So what I'm looking at is, right now, we've got a piece of property that... Rodney, can you put it to that one where it shows all the existing lots? So what we've got there now is we've got five lots that are all residential lots, and then up to the north there is just unplatted land. So, what I did is I want, the comp plan shows that whole area as being duplexes, and there's a huge demand right now for, you know, single-family, but this is, makes it a little even more affordable. People are loving the, the, you know, the apartments are great and everything, but it's nice to have something that you can kind of call your own home. And it, so the twin houses are nice, and that's what we're proposing there, so it matches up perfectly with the comp plan and everything. So I guess the first thing I'd like to do is get the base of this whole thing down, and I'd like to change that whole area to SR, what is it, SR, no, is it SR six or TR six?
Yeah.
TR six. So, to make it simple, instead of so complicated, is if we just take that whole site, even without a, the CSM is the way you just use it to dissect it. It's a, a sub, you're subdividing it. So if we, we gotta start out here and try to figure out, okay, to make that match the comp plan, let's get that whole piece rezoned, and that's what I'd really appreciate you all to do for me, and even with those lots that are there, that's all conforming, because those lots, you can put single families on, they meet the minimum with requirements, square footage requirements. Then we can go on to figure out, okay, now we've got this big lot, and let's how, figure out how we're gonna, you know, build with inside of it. That'll come at another date and time, and that's where we're gonna work on the group development, and, and, but we, I'd like to touch base a little bit and get some ideas from you all on how we're gonna design, and I don't know if you all ever played SimCity, but that's kind of what we're gonna do here tonight. So I want to get your ideas and input, because I want something here that you're gonna be proud of when you drive by, and I can kind of show you my ideas. But really, what I'd like you to do is make a motion tonight to at least get the property rezoned to the proper zoning net, you know, and then the CSM, we can talk about that next. You know, because if we rezoned it right now, it would allow the same amount of houses, only the, the portion up to the north would allow one duplex. And what I'd like to do, time is of the essence, you know, interest rates are low, I want to start building right away, and I started a new construction house here because people have been calling, I mean, knocking down my door and wanting affordable housing. I mean, I've got a list, something affordable. That house is already sold. Was originally gonna be a duplex, but I wanted to help these people out. They were gonna move out of Stoughton to find affordable housing, and I said, I'll build something, and that's why we're doing that. So I would like to build immediately, right next door to it, a two-story, and the way, can you put up that, that picture I did, that landscape one with all the house buildings, please? Rodney, the, if you want to zoom out on that. So, up along Page Street there, and this is input I got from, actually Rodney had a lot to do with it, that side entry garage, that was his idea from the last meeting. Because when you come in there, Page Street's a pretty, you know, busy road, and the last thing I want people to do is see garage doors. You're not going into the display section of Menards with the garage, you know, I want it to look, when you come in, a nice welcoming area. So what I got kind of envisioned there is those are two-story townhomes with rear-entry kind of alleyway garages on them. So technically, the infrastructure's already there. We already got the curb, we got the gutter, you know, all we have to do is expand the sidewalk. Sewer and water's right across the street. So what I'd like to do right away is build that unit next to that single-family right away and get that going, because my wife's mother would like to actually move in there and have one side there, you know, she wants to sell her house in town here. So, the whole fronts of them will be nice porches, and it'll look like, you know, homes from like the eighteen nineties, nineteen hundreds, you know, porches on the front, two-story, nice-looking townhomes there. So when you come in, you don't see any garages or anything. So, that's that portion. And then, the reason with the ten-foot is I didn't want to lose a tree. There's some beautiful, beautiful trees over there. And if I, I can make it two, two lanes, but we'd have to take down some trees, and I love trees, so that's the reason for that ten-foot. And basically what that does, it makes a circle, one-way traffic circle, you know, you can still get fired. I've seen developments not even have that road there. Over in Venable, I'll give you an instance, they have a trail that goes through there with a gate on it, and if there's a fire, they open the gate and the fire truck can use the trail as its route. So you could actually really technically dead-end each one of them, because it's no different than the sixth unit that's built across from Oscar Lynnrood's property there. If you look, there's drives in, and they've got, what is there, eight units up there? Over by the senior, where they built that senior housing? I think the guys that are doing the apartments over there built it. I think it's an eight unit with a dead end. So, I just think it's nice to have that flow of traffic, and the reason I like the twenty-foot wide all the way around is you got places people can park on there. So, but I, I don't know, where, where do you all want to start with this? Where would be a good thing where we can?
You guys have any questions or anything that Mr. Arnett had to say, or any of the, the concerns that were outlined in the, in the resolution here that you want to talk about, or what direction you guys want to go here? I mean, obviously, in order to make this happen, there's some certain things that Mr. Arnett would have to agree to do in order to make it feasible. Is there anything in particular of concern for anyone? All the person, Jensen?
Yeah, I'm, I have to say that I'll, I agree with the, with the seven points here that were listed in this resolution. I think that we need to have those met. As far as the pizzas is concerned, I prefer to, I prefer to know what's going on in my pizza before I approve the pizza. So, that's my comment to that.
Okay, is there anything on the resolution here that is a particular challenge for you to be able to meet?
Well, yes, there, there is. So I guess what we could do is we could start either with, with the rezone portion of it, or we could go to the CSM. I'm just trying to think, I always like to, like, start with the base, which is the rezone.
That's fine, go ahead.
On the rezoning, I don't, I'm just trying to see here, okay, as far as the CSM... An ease, okay, that's on, that must be on the map. Okay, so here's the rezone. Okay, so here's the rezone. So all the conditions here, I don't mind. The only portion I do not, is section three on here. It says the applicant has to obtain approval for the group development before any of this takes place. Well, to do a conditional use, you have to have the zoning first before you can go on. So a conditional use is something you add on at a later time. So what I'd like to do is just get the zoning right, right now. And that would restrict me to, I could only build one unit on that whole property, you know, and I, you know, it'd be one big lot. Then the group development, we could come back at, you know, next month because it's probably going to take about a month and a half, two-month process. And then we can work on the group, the conditional use. Because then it's a condition, but you can't apply for a conditional use without having the zoning done, the base of it done before. I guess that's the cheese or something. You know, right now, we're just getting the base of it built, so.
And what would our concerns be with?
Well, just like Alder Jensen has indicated, there's an interest in fully understanding what the group development, that was some of the discussion that occurred in 2016, is making sure they understood what they were approving. I personally have a little concern about rezoning the entire larger parcel without having those details articulated. And even though there's interest to build possibly this first unit here, there is access issues and dimensions and things that aren't shown here well. The position of this house even could dictate the appropriate throat distance of this public, not public, but this access for emergency equipment to come in. I think it's important to try to work through some of those items before that aspect of it be, and certainly, you've highlighted Alder Jensen at least some of the concerns about access within here. Pedestrian traffic within this facility, I think is something that needs, is a valid point to figure out. Understanding parking, yes, there's parking in the units, but there, is there any guest parking accommodated? Because there isn't any parking on B that would be allowed. And there's really very little frontage, if you will, on Page Street since there's bike lanes. So there is a little concern about how this flows well. And I think it's, I think it behooves us to try to look at this in a comprehensive manner. This ties the rezoning to the CSM and the CSM to the rezoning so that some of those details can be worked out. The CSM, again, you know, as submitted, I'm not suggesting that it get denied outright because I think that there's, there's effort to try to get this approved and support to get it approved. But there's a number of procedural things, how to vacate easements, how to deal with Murray Drive. Those things have to be done in a procedure that hasn't been fully understood or pursued yet at this point.
All the person Johnson?
Rodney, would you be comfortable with approving it with contingent on working through those items?
The preliminary, I think the resolution for the CSM ties those two together. I think this could be, you know, this is something the city attorney would review last minute just before the 26 council meeting because he's out of town. But this, I think, captures our conversation that we had recently to try to continue to allow this going forward. The three options that he put out there for the CSM is to deny, table, or approve with conditions. And I think we're trying to suggest a position or an option to allow it to progress in a manner, but knowing there's a number of things that have to be worked through first.
All the person Bartlett?
Yeah, I'm definitely not opposed to this. There are some concerns, as Rodney has said. I like this a lot better than the 2016 one, looking back at that. It looked like it was way overbuilt, be a lot more issues with access and emergency services, everything. I guess I hadn't thought about the sidewalks, but that's a big issue because we have, everywhere else where we do street work, we're forcing sidewalks. So we would like to see some more pedestrian accessibility. So I'm not sure how that works, if that's a private drive, the entire complex, how we would treat that was something I need to think more about. But yeah, overall, I support the development, I guess. I look forward with the conditions, I think, so that we can work those out. And Rodney, if this is approved, all this comes back with those conditions, is that correct? What would the process be? Would the plans would come back as they're developed?
Yeah, I think a solidified plan would have to be brought back related to the group development. The group development scenario outlines some things that lay out anticipated potential lot splits, if that ever was to occur. And I think you, you've hit on many of the things that I think are continuing to come up as discussion points that need resolution.
Go ahead.
So as far as sidewalks and vacating that, what we did is actually, I took this to the Parks Department a while back ago for the whole thing. And I mean, they're like, it's about time a developer's willing to build some trails and do some good stuff. So what we came up with is this idea, that's kind of like a trailhead. That trail, you'll be able to get on that and get out to the state park, you're going to be able to get down to the Hara River. That's a major trail system there. So that's, that's going to move your foot traffic. Now, to put sidewalks inside of, you know, a complex like this, the roads, that's why we're going to a twenty-foot wide roads, you know, and we're trying to get away from, you know, we want less concrete and all that. So, you know, there's going to be walkways coming out of the houses and that. But I can give, bring some examples of other places where, you know, stuff like this has been done. But as far as the CSM goes, you know, that I'm proposing, I have no problem doing the conditions. That's where we get to build the, you know, add the different things to it. So one thing would be, that isn't vacated. And I don't know why it got on the map. You know, if you could direct them, you know, because I've done probably sixty CSMs throughout my life, all over different communities and that. And a lot of times, as long as we, you all agree, you could direct them and say, hey, as long as it doesn't, you don't add ten more lots, all the little technicalities, they can cover that, make sure that. So I'd be willing to take that vacated off the map because that's not vacated and that's not a way to vacate the property. The proper way is I'm going to have, you know, petition because I'm the owner of that property, and then I've got an agreement with the other owners that we're going to give that as parkland. So that'll be done separately. That's part of the Norseview Heights subdivision. So I could remove that off the CSM. The dedication for the parkland has already been approved through the park. It was, I think it's on here, I wrote, it was the date and everything. It was approved four to, it was a five to zero. They approved it. And we did the, whatever that study was where you need to know if there's direct burial tanks or, you know, asbestos buried on the site, all the environmental studies have been done or whatever. We submitted that already. So we could just call that lot three or not, like Rodney said, we could call it an outlot. You know, we could add that on there.
Go ahead, Greg.
Rodney, I'm a bit confused. I thought when, when we approved the redirect of Carl Avenue, that we approved the vacation or the vacating of the Murray Avenue.
Yeah. Alder Jensen brings up kind of a point that a number of you aren't aware of, but there's a preliminary plat that was approved with a bunch of conditions for the Arnett addition to Norseview Heights, which would, which, one of the conditions was requiring the vacation of Murray Drive in that segment and the reshaping of Carl Avenue and the USA Amendment. So there's a number of things that are still lingering related to that preliminary plat approval that haven't been able to be completed yet at this point for one reason or another. So.
So it wasn't in my, my...
I'm sorry?
My recollection is not correct that we did vacate that.
Their condition was a requirement that it be vacated properly. It has not been vacated yet.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Seltzer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would think that we should table this with a little more, I guess the emphasis would be on the developer to work with Rodney on clearing up some of these details. And certainly not negative about this project at all, but I think it's not quite the right time to approve everything the way it is now. I think there needs to be some more coordination between the city and the developer, and I would look positively toward it, but I don't think we're ready to vote right now on saying yes.
Did you have any comments about what?
Again, I...
Looking to clear up here?
Certainly, I think that there's a number of things that are recommended in here that I think really need to be solidified, and that might be part of a development agreement. You know, how those easements get vacated, when they get vacated, how they, how those things need to be articulated. You know, we've done a number of CSMs in this area, and truthfully, we've not done the subdivision and platting process that would have required a development agreement to articulate those things. So I think those are the things that we'd like to make sure we address so that both the developer and the city understand what the expectations are and the outcomes that are expected.
So is the process to work that out first or to work through the ordinance and the zoning we have in front of us? I mean, it's the chicken or the egg?
Well, the CSM resolution's written with a bunch of conditions that say those things have to be done before we can sign the resolution or before we can sign this certified survey map. So those things would have to be worked through before the city would sign off on the resolution. What I hear being questioned more maybe is whether the zoning should be changed to TR six until that aspect of it is vetted out with the commission.
All the person Johnson?
I can understand Tom's point on this. However, I think that with the conditions in here, that if we approve the CSM tonight, that that would be sufficient with the conditions in there, that that would all be worked out before we do the zoning change. So I'd make that motion.
Your motion is to recommend that the resolution, as presented.
So you're talking about the resolution for the CSM?
Yeah, with the conditions that are...
Okay. As stated?
As stated.
Okay. So there is a motion. Is there a second on that one?
I'll second that.
Okay, the second by Bartlett. Any discussion on that? Did you have any concerns with things on here? I mean...
Well, yeah, you know, it's pretty, it sounds complicated, but it's not really because the Murray Drive thing has nothing to do with this portion of land. If that's, whatever way that goes, that has no effect on it. So that's separate. So we can easily, so let's maybe look at it line item by line item. So I can remove that off the map. I agree to do that, no problem. The next thing would be the easement. And what they're talking about, there's a utility easement. Rodney, could you show that map, please?
I don't know that I have it.
It would be probably, even if you show the original or the CSM that I'm proposing.
It's not on there.
Here, if you show it, I can kind of show you where to point.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not depicted on here.
No, no, but it's pretty easy to explain where. Okay, so you see the, could you zoom in just a little more, please? If you, if you see those lots, the north part of them, there's a ten-foot wide utility easement that goes across there, okay? Well, it's not showing on there, and you can't legally vacate it without going through the, I have to notify all the utilities and say, you know, even though I own the land, I have no problem putting it back on because if you look at my aerial, it doesn't affect. So even if we leave it there, and I can, I can take it out later, I don't have to use the CSM to remove it. So I have no problem putting the easement on my final one that I'd give to Rodney and Mike for recording. So that's, that's the utility easements that they're talking about. Now, when we get into the group development and start laying that out, then the utilities is going to say they're going to want some additional stuff. Well, if I'm going to build these houses, I've got to have power to them, I'm going to give them the easements. So the easements will come at a later time. But just to make a nice, clean CSM, that part's easy. And then the driveway access out to County Highway B, that was the reason this got tabled. It was, it was all ready to be approved. The only thing is they were concerned, I had a loop that came out, and they didn't like the traffic, and it made perfect sense, and that's why we have these meetings, is it was coming out too close to the intersection. So I moved the access point as far south as you can get it. And that's where it's showing right now, and we've got a twenty-foot wide easement. So we can take that driveway off there. He had to show it on there, but that's not depicted as access. And we agree, we don't want to, the only thing I would ask for, and I don't know how I'd go about this, is I'd like all our construction access off of there because Page Street gets a little, you know, we don't want to put big weighted semis out on your road and stuff. We'd rather put it out on the county's roads. So if, the plan would be to work our way on out that way. So if we could use it for construction access only, and I don't know if I need your approval on it or if I go to Mike and Rodney, just to get temporary, you know, but on the map, we won't show it as...
As several years.
You'd have to probably talk to the county, wouldn't you, on that?
City would have a role too.
Yeah.
Yeah, our recommendation is the plat would be designated as no access on the one, or on the County B.
Yeah. Yeah, and we could do, that's not, the only thing is now that house that's there, we have to give them access. Right now, they're sharing my driveway. So that driveway is a shared driveway right now. So there's still going to be access, it's just going to be moved over just for one house going out on the road there. So the CSM, you know, we can fix it if you all made a motion that said, yeah, well, he has to put the easements on there. And these guys are, they're sharp enough, they know that I can't record it without that back on there. And we put no access along there. And then Rodney, would we make that twenty-foot strip? Would that be a lot two or would it just be called an outlot?
You know, A.J., I'm not in a position to say for sure. And I don't necessarily agree with everything you might be saying about the timing of when those things should be taking place, but I think that's why we need to work through them. You know, just like the vacation of Murray Drive, I think we think it's important to get that effectuated and in place. And, you know, there's a real appropriate time to do that since we're reconfiguring the adjacent lot. So I think a number of those things, I continue to agree, the discussion needs to take place. And that's what I'm hoping can occur so that we can bring back a clean, a clean plat.
Yeah, just want to add, what makes it challenging for me, and I'm new as a, on the planning commission, and some of the other ones are pretty young at it themselves, it's really hard for us to follow this because it seems like there's a lot of potential moving pieces here. It would be a lot easier for us to get our arms around it if we had a final product in front of us instead of, this almost seems a little bit conceptual to me. And I know in your mind, you kind of have an idea of what you want to do, and you're trying to articulate it the best you can. But for me and maybe some of the others, it's really hard to follow it. And I don't know if there's a simplified way you could bring something like that to us so we could have a better understanding, one that, you know, has all the easements in there, and it may even be color-coded or something so we could say, you're referring to something, you can say it's the blue spot up there and that sort of thing. Because I find it really difficult to kind of follow all the moving parts here, especially when we know, as Rodney mentioned, there's still some unfinished business on some of the other lots, and it would be cleaner just to pull this thing together and get it all done instead of having two half-developed subdivisions in the same area. All the person Johnson?
Yeah, what there is now is five lots. So you really have six, all we're doing is just making two lots out of six lots.
But it sounds a little bit more complicated than that, though, as you go through it.
Well, they make it sound like that, and it's really not. It's, you know, we take away, you know, it's pretty simple.
Yeah, it, you know, it's a big deal, though. It's thirteen duplexes and another's...
Well, no, that's, that's, see, that's what gets confusing. If I was just coming in here and I didn't even tell you about them duplexes, that comes later. Then, once we get the slate where we want it, the pan, and then we start putting it together, then we, right now, I just want to, I own this land, and I want to make two lots out of six lots. That's all I'm trying to do.
So then I don't understand why you didn't just bring that.
Well, because that's something separate I want to talk to you about, to get input so the next time I come back, then that's where we get, you know, I can't even talk about group development without having this piece rezoned because that's a conditional use, so...
You can talk about it.
That's something separate that I'm bringing to you all.
And that's why it gets confusing to me because you know kind of what your vision is, I'm trying to understand it.
Oh, I understand.
And I'm about ten, twenty steps behind you right now.
Okay.
And I'm trying to catch up, and it's really hard to do that on the fly, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe that's something we can follow up on, you know, just kind of a one-on-one or a two-on-one setting to kind of fully understand how that works.
Yeah.
Other person, Johnson, did you have something?
I think what the motion is, is to, to make this as simple as we can. I understand what, what AJ's trying to do here. And I, I, I think the consensus is that we would like to see this or something like this go forward. So the best way to make this happen is to let Rodney do his job. To, to have AJ sit down and, and work through the conditions.
And I agree with that.
Done.
What you gotta understand is, is a little bit more to it than just letting Rodney do his job because I've been kind of watching. And every time we sit down and we go through and make changes, we have to hire our attorney to come in and sit down and go through it with him. And every time we say, you know what, now let's change this now or let's table it. Now we have to start all over again and the meter keeps ticking. So we want to make sure that we can present something that's clean and right and doable and not work on something and then table it and two years come back and try to remember where we left off and, and pick up and start all over again. And that's the challenge here for me, is we want to keep this thing going, but we want to make sure there's an end game and we want to be clear what that's going to look like and whether or not we can get it over the finish line. So that's where I'm at, I, you know, so if the best way to do that is, is to go through and, and pass the resolution as it is, that's fine. What I'm hearing with Mr. Arnett is he has some challenges in here. And if he does, you know, I don't want to spend hours trying to figure them out. As far as I'm concerned, a lot of that should be taken care of before it's brought to us. That's my opinion. Others may differ. Other person, Caravelo?
The more I look at this, I, I, I understand the discussion that's going on here with, you know, you having building the base for the pie and trying to get everything figured. But the more that I look at this, aside from the sidewalks and the pedestrian aspect, just not being there is a pretty huge concern in this development, although I like the trail. You know, I'm, I'm in huge favor of that. Also, I see a major problem with the placement of the, what's designated as the 20-foot wide private drive in relation to where that's going to be siphoning all these people onto Page Street so near B. I see a, a traffic and public safety issue being created there, to be honest with you. If people are trying to turn left from Page into that driveway at 5:00 in the afternoon and traffic is coming off of B at a high rate of speed as, as people come off of B, you know, a little quick there and Page Street's a very busy street. And vice versa in the morning where people are going to be exiting this, taking a right turn onto Page to head north towards B and there's traffic backed up waiting to get onto B. I see, I see potential, something potentially not pretty taking place there, there. If you guys are following me with, with traffic backups, especially with the number of people that are going to be these housing units.
Where would you suggest it goes then? Where would you think?
Well, not to throw a broomstick into anything, into the hornet's nest, not that we're dealing with that, but what's the exact situation with Marie Drive not existing at this point? I mean, is that a done deal that Marie Drive is not going to exist?
Still dedicated as right of way, but it's not approved.
You're talking a 90-foot difference to slide it, you know, and I can give you other scenarios where stuff are like this, you know, close to the intersection like that. You know, because that was the big thing. That's where they want, you know, last time I met with everybody, they liked that location. You know, having the other flow coming out over there wasn't really an option. But if you look at.
You mean, are you referring to having flow coming out from Marie Drive or straight onto B?
No, nobody wanted anything out to B.
Okay.
And they wanted everything kept away from the corner as far down as we could get it. So if you look at Lot One without, and then all them other lots, they just stayed there. If we were just looking at Lot One, where would be the best place to put a driveway on that map? Nowhere long B is far away. You, you have to give access to Lot One. Lot One has to have access. You can't land lock a property. So if we slid it all the way down is where I've got it, I actually encroached it into, which would have been Lot 156. So I even got it out of the original northern piece and I got it as far south as we could get it, you know, down there. So it's only 90 feet away from the original where Marie Drive was going to be.
I guess it's, it's a concern.
Okay.
Commissioner Seltzer.
Thank you. I, I still, I would, I would be opposed to the motion to go ahead and approve this and then leave it up to the city, i.e. Rodney, to work all these definite issues out. Part of it is that once you start approving certain parts of this, then other parts have to follow. There need, I think there definitely needs to be a, a more certain overall concept to what's going on before this is approved and, and brought forward. And I would move to table it.
Okay, so there's a motion to table? Is there a second motion to table it?
I'll second that.
All right, so there's a motion by Seltzer and a second by Caravelo. You cannot discuss a motion to table, so we'll vote right away. All in favor of table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
So I believe that.
Three to two.
Three to two. I'm a voting member as well.
Three to two.
Three to two. So that motion would be tabled. So I guess, you know, it can be, it can be brought back and hopefully we've given you enough direction on what we're looking for in order to bring it back and get it through the next.
So what, what's been tabled? I don't even understand. Is it the CSM or is it the rezone?
Both of them.
I, I would agree with table in the CSM, but I think the rezone should, I think that's straightforward. It's just, I want the whole, all them lots, every, just that whole area just rezoned, you know, to, and then, then, then when I come back with the CSM now, I can do, bring the group development and we can get it all done. But at least I see some effort from the city saying, yes, we want this to match the comp plan. We're just rezoning it, you know, because right now it's all single-family. It, it's the same thing, you know, and that is. So that, I would agree with the CSM table in that portion of.
I think what we did is we table them both because that's how the resolution.
Is that how, they were both brought as two resolutions or one?
One resolution, one ordinance.
One ordinance?
Ordinance is rezoning, the zoning is rezoned, is an ordinance. Resolutions of CSM.
Okay, so I disagree with what you all did, but I'll go with it. So can we talk about the, the group development? Because that was something separate that I was bringing to you all.
Okay, that's item eight. And that's a request for the conceptual group development of the southeast corner of North Page Street and County Highway B, which we'll get up here on the board. And who would like to, to start this discussion? Go ahead.
All right, so I guess I'd like to work with Phil here and try to figure out, you know, the core of it's going to be where's the best place to put this driveway for, for this parcel? So what I did is I took the feedback from, you know, we've had probably three meetings about this and.
At Park and Rack or here?
No, Park and Rack and Planning Commission. That was the thing that got a table last time was.
In 2016.
Oh, in 2016?
That driveway.
That was your property back in 2016?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so that's kind of where I guess we start is, you know, where do we put the access? So if we're not going to have the access.
Two with four.
Off of Page, then I need to go back to the drawing board on that. So that, I'd like to get some feedback, what people think about having that there.
Any thoughts on, on that part, anybody or Rodney, did you have anything on that?
Certainly, I think he's captured the discussion that occurred back then. The, the thing that did change a little bit in, in the time since the last, the last action was construction took place on this, this parcel here. The planning commission, while they didn't cite a particular location, positioning this directly adjacent to an offset of Marie Drive wouldn't be particularly good either. But this was not part of the discussion previously when the planning commission was discussing where to try to position this driveway along Page Street.
So you're looking for feedback on?
Just to see if, you know, because I want to come back to the next meeting and have all the stuff that you are looking for. You know, and I, and that's what I did when I captured this was from the last time I met with the planning commission. And so, you know, that's where I'm, you know, because like Rodney said, if you slide it to the south, then you're too close to that intersection there. And, you know, and I guess one, one idea I have, if you throw it out there is, you know, if these all have driveways coming out, you know, like across the street, we're not doing that. We're bringing everything out onto one, you know, and most people are going to take a right turn going out. And if you're coming in, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know if it'd be a big, what, the, I'm just trying to, do you know of any areas, Mike, around town where something similar to this, where it hasn't posed a problem? This, the, the eight unit they built is the same, about the same distance back from B, their access point for that eight unit. It might even be a little less, the one, you know, which went up by Oscars there.
Yep.
The senior, the, the big apartment building they built there has that, the same amount of access. So I guess that's the biggest thing is that, the driveway. I, I'd want to know if, if you all are comfortable with where it's at or if there's something we can do. Maybe we slow the traffic down or maybe we put in a, a divider in the middle of the road or something to slow some. I don't know. I'm asking you all for some input and ideas. I don't think it's going to pose a problem, but, you know, you know, that's what you all are here for, to see, you know, to address that.
Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, I definitely see your issue with accessing Lot One, especially if we don't want to ride on Lot, Highway B coming off there near that intersection too. So I'm not sure a better place to put it unless we make some use of Marie Drive. And I know that discussion apparently happened in 2016, a lot of talk about that. So I don't know where other orders would feel about that right now. I, I don't know. I, I guess I don't see a better place to put it. It may have to become a right-in, right-out if the traffic is too much. That's the only thing I could see to do with it.
What do you mean? Oh, where you turn?
They can only turn right.
Okay.
In or out.
Yeah.
It would be inconvenient for people coming back. If they come back Highway B, they have to go down, turn around somewhere to be another issue too. But that was talked about on other developments, doing a right-in, right-out. I know on 138 from Kettle Park West, that was one of the access areas for that highway. But that's the one I could see. I don't know where else to put it.
Yeah, that's where I'm at too on it is like where do you, you know, I guess, you know, we bring it out to, you know, I could maybe bring it and come out to, is that Carl Avenue? But then we're taking away parkland and crossing a, a trail. You know, I, that's the best site, place I can see on that parcel there where to put it. You know, so if I can kind of get an idea of, you know, if you all think, think it'll work, then we can kind of move forward with that portion of it. Is it?
No.
Go ahead.
I'm almost, as I'm looking at this and it, it almost looks to me like a logical solution would be to put the trail where you're planning on putting the drive and have Marie Drive. I'm trying to think of how to, if, yeah, you're, because you were talking about craft, traffic crossing the trail. If Marie Drive existed and the trail actually, instead of turning south where it does as it enters this property, if it went straight through where this drive is now designated.
Now, Phil, are you mostly concerned with the in-traffic or the out-traffic? Which one do you think would be the?
Yes.
Is it in or out?
Both, both. And, and I thought about the right-in and the right-out and then, then you're just going to have people doing U-turns.
Yeah, you don't.
And reg or wherever. And then it's really going to be just kooky. I guess, are you completely opposed to using Marie Drive at this point? That would allow also.
I'm here for, hey, I'm here to try to, you know, come up with ideas. I'm strategizing. I want to be able to come back next month and, and get something that I can get you all to say, yes, 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 yes. So that, that's where, I like this brainstorming idea where we brainstorm. I'm open to any, it doesn't matter to me, you know, but it's, we, we want good quality trails. You know, we want good park systems and a lot of people supported this, this trailhead here. I mean, that's been a big thing, having some nice green space coming off of Page Street. And, you know, I don't know if you're going to get the, you might get a lot of phone calls from the people on Carl Avenue if we start putting traffic onto Carl. I guess my, I'm just trying to think. You know, okay, so what, what's the concern? So you, let's, you're in your car, you come out there. It, it's not I-90 you're pulling out to. This is Page Street. They do drive a little faster than they need to. That we can address some with the safety department. But it, it's not that bad to pull out. It's no diff, so if you're on Marie Drive and I was fixing to pull out and turn right, is it going to change the right turn moving it from Marie Drive or 90 feet? And 90 feet is like from here to lot, from that.
I guess.
You know what I mean?
As far as a, a time of day situation, because if you've been on Page Street in the morning.
Oh, I'm there, I'm there all the time. I know what it's like.
And you see traffic kind of start to back up a little bit at the intersection with B. And sort of more of a bottleneck being created there with people trying to actually come out of this drive onto, onto Page. There's a potential there. You know, I, I don't know. I don't have traffic statistics or information.
No, really, just using common sense, if you're down, just because you're on, the bottleneck is just going to be maybe three extra cars, four cars. So you just can't have to wait your turn to turn out. It doesn't matter where you put that. The right turn, you're just going to have to wait. You're, the person, if it's bottleneck, they're not going to pull out. So it's not really going to pose a safety issue for a right turn. So let's say that same person now wants to make a left turn, they're just going to have to wait their turn. And it's, I've never seen it backed up like that, you know, all the way back. And then coming back, there's no stops. You just come down and you make a left turn in. You know, it's not going to bottleneck turning into it, coming off of B. And if you're coming up Page to turn right into it, it doesn't matter if you put it where it's at, Marie Drive or that. So I really don't think it's going to, if you had it, that was the thing, if you had it right up by the intersection, that's where, why they're up. They didn't like the idea because then, see, right now, you're 220 feet away from that intersection.
Previously, they didn't like, the, the planning commission in, was it 2016? Didn't like a four-way or a two-way, didn't like Marie Drive being there. This was that.
No, no, the, the city never requested Marie Drive not to be installed.
Okay.
He's asking about where to position the driveway in this Lot Three. The city has never requested, obviously, they've supported having a, a trail utilize Marie Drive right-of-way or area. But there has, the city has never pushed the issue about trying not to improve.
Okay.
That roadway.
Because it just, from a engineering standpoint, does it seem to make more sense that Marie Drive exists as opposed to the private drive? Engineering-wise?
There's costs associated with the different alternatives. That's a lot of what we can drive that. I mean, there's different right, you're dedicating, there's 60, there's 60-foot of dedicated right-of-way here, 60 feet. Whereas, you know, this is utilizing something less than that for driveway access. And then usually in a public corridor, you have curb gutter sidewalk, street. All of that's improved in a public right-of-way. So if that was improved, those features would be necessary in here unless there was some variation of that. Whereas in a private development, you may not have all of those. Whereas in a private development, you may not have all of those, those improvements on the private site.
Yeah, then you've got that much more street the city has to maintain. Now you've got all that curb and gutter, and you're only serving, what is it really serving, Marie Drive? The houses on the, on the south are already built, they're not accessing it. So, and the houses on the right can easily be assessed, you know, accessed over here. So really, it's to the city's benefit to do this, especially from a standpoint of maintenance and salting and plowing and mowing, or not mowing, but, you know, maintenance on there. But I just feel that, that, my thoughts is, that's one of the best spots for that drive right now. The only thing, I guess, if we stubbed it out to Marie Drive or over to Carl Avenue, you know, put the traffic out there, but then you'd have, that could be just as, you know, you're only, you're talking, you know, 26 residents or 26 units in here. So it's not like, think of a big apartment building, what they're proposing out there, they've got how many, 70 units? You know, I'm talking 23, or 27 single-family homes is what we're talking. Now is there, Rodney, is there something saying we can't go out onto B or, or, I don't think?
We're recommending against it for safety reasons.
Okay.
Limited connections to B on that corridor, especially where you're connecting on, you know, 26 additional units does not see.
No, yeah, because that's, that, that traffic's moving pretty fast through there.
Yeah.
So.
So, just so folks have a little more background, this is, this is, this is the larger parcel with those five lots that he was talking about. So B is along the northern edge of the screen approximately, and this is Page Street. This is vacated or soon to be, or could be vacated, Marie Drive. Carl Avenue was plotted to come up to this point and continue out to here. This area here was not part of the original seventh addition to Northview Heights. The Arnett addition has been approved as a Plumery plat to create this area, but it's not currently in the city's urban service area, so this street connection cannot occur. So none of this and the utilities cannot be put in to allow that to occur at this point. But originally, this had houses on both sides of Carl Avenue, up to a point where it then teed with Marie Drive, and Marie Drive was connected to Page Street at this location with five single-family parcels along the north side. His request, as you know, is to remove the five parcels, or consolidate the five parcels here into one larger parcel, and then to allow essentially a portion of this existing single-family parcel to remain a single-family. So it just gives you a little more background.
Was there a plan with that, Rodney, for accessing that Lot One in this scenario? Because they put that five residents on the south side, there's no real access to Lot One.
Yeah, again, there isn't any access, I guess there potentially could be some at this very corner, because this curved, newly curved Carl Avenue could accommodate that. But Marie Drive in this concept was anticipated to be vacated.
Marie Drive cannot connect to Carl, it sounds like though.
It can unless it becomes vacated.
That was one of the resolution, or one of the recommendations is, that we were talking about earlier, they wanted, you know, previously, they wanted it vacated. But, you know, I just want to address what Phil's, you know, I want everybody to feel comfortable that this is a good spot for this driveway, you know, for access in there. Because that's the whole building blocks behind the whole thing. If I move the ad, the, the street, I just don't know where else to put it, you know, if, you know, because it's as far south as I can get it. I can't go to the north any because that just puts me closer to the intersection up there. And they did the same thing over, there's, if you go to the, if you'd go right, you know right where this is at, right? So if you keep driving up B there, you go to Oscars Farm, which is up at the top of the hill, there's that eight unit. When you turn left.
At Lincoln.
And that's got all the school traffic coming in and out of here, and they've got that big senior apartment place, there's probably, but.
No traffic.
How many of them drive, you know?
There's very few stalls.
Yeah, that's, so I was, I can't really use that as an example, but, you know, the eight units, it's eight units right there, and I don't, you know, there's a lot of school traffic coming out of here. I don't, I don't think it's going to, you know, yeah, you might have to sit there, these people that are renting or living in here might pull out and have to sit and wait for the traffic on Page, but I don't think it's as busy as, you know, it has its little spurts, but it's not that, you know, you know, you're only talking, what is it, 90 feet from where, where Marie was originally plotted up to here to a private access point. You've got good visibility, you can see to the right, nobody's going to get blindsided, and you can look to the right, and so from a safety, from pulling out, it's a safe area. Patience, you're just going to have to have patience maybe when it's, you know, on a busy day, that's the only thing. But I think from a safety standpoint, I don't think it would create a traffic incident.
This item here is not really an action item, you just wanted to have a conversation?
Yeah, I'm just trying to come up with, I'm brainstorming you all, so that when I come back, you all say, hey, he listened to us. You know, maybe I might not like all your ideas, but Rodney is the one that came up with that side-access driveway. If I would have ever asked him for his opinion, we'd have had a garage facing out onto Page Street, you know, so it's little things like that. I'm just trying to say, ask you all, what's some, what's some ideas, you know? You like the trails? Do you like, you know, do you want to see something different in a horseshoe pits or volleyball and that, you know, give me some idea, you know, what's something that you think the city needs? I want a lot of trees in there. I like trees, and, you know, Tom brought up, you know, this is historical city, and that's why I want to kind of create, you know, those style of homes along Page Street there, not, you know, to give it that, kind of that old feeling, because that's kind of an entryway into Stoughton, you know, Page, Page gets used, and.
I guess I don't really hear too many suggestions on this part of it. I think more of the concerns were on the stuff that we tabled. And I think maybe as we get further down the road, maybe answer some of those questions that these other ones will come into play then, will have a better understanding of what the thing's going to look like as a whole. So I guess, you know, I guess what I'm suggesting is, is, you know, you kind of go back and you review the things that were in the resolution. I don't know how long you've had a copy of this.
Yeah, I just got it.
Yeah.
We're working on it yet today.
Yeah, and just go through that, and if you have any questions, obviously, you know, contact Rodney, and he can kind of walk you through the specifics of what that is, and then based on that feedback, you can come back to the group at a later date and, you know, or, and I'll be happy to sit down with you before then and review what you, what you have to present to larger group. It's kind of really hard for us to, I mean, we're not a design team, it's hard for us to do this on the fly. I'm certainly not, you know, I'm not a planner, I'm not an engineer, so, I mean, I might have some ideas, but I think if I have at least a general picture of what it's going to look like, then it'll be easier for us to fill in the gaps.
Exactly, yeah.
So that's what I'm suggesting, is, is we, you know, we try to do that conversation on the side and then bring something back to the larger group. Otherwise, I don't think we're going to get any further with this particular one tonight because, I mean, really the only thing I heard was the road, and you said that's really the only option, so.
So is there any other, like, anything else that you all see that, not from a designing standpoint, just from that, you think, is there too many units, too less units? You know, you like the conceptual layout, except, you know?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I'm okay with the density, it doesn't look too dense. I think it's a good layout, like the green space, definitely the bike trail, eventually will connect to the county trail going north, and so I like that a lot, so.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to layout and stuff, you know, so mainly the road and some of the public, public accommodations, whether we need sidewalks, things like that, some things to figure out, but.
And that's something, you know, I can take that back and see if there's, if we can throw that in there, but I want to, like you mentioned, you said you want to see, you know, I want to come back.
Yeah, I mean, I'm here to help approve a development, not to develop it.
No.
That's not my thing. You know, we're here to say yes or no, yeah, we might have a few ideas, but it seems like you're asking us to really start from scratch and work our way up to there, and I really don't know if that's the role of this commission.
No, no, but, you know, he brought, Phil brought up a good thing, that was, you know, I don't want to come in with a plan and then have Phil say, nope, I'm not going to support that because of this. So I'd like to know upfront, what are the things, you know, like Tom, he's into historical things, and I'm, you know, I want to be able to get your support and for you back it, and you feel proud of what, what you approved, because this will be here forever, and you can tell everybody, hey, I helped approve that, you know, as part of that. I'm not asking you to pick the color of the sidings of the houses or anything, just, you know, is this something? And then I'll go back and get it detailed out, and all that stuff is technicality stuff, you know, the easements and that, we can take care of that.
I just offer one thing, I would just offer one thing if I can as staff. The devil is in the details for us, as you know, AJ, and certainly one of the group development requirements is, is outlining the, the building envelopes on here, and there's supposed to be dimension to show the setbacks from individual buildings, so they're supposed to be accommodated for building envelopes. That goes to Alder Bartlett's comments about sidewalks and other things. If those things are shown with the building envelopes, shows the setbacks are being met in all the different building locations, that's going to help define how this, this plan is or isn't suitable to meet the zoning requirements.
Thanks.
All right, well, thanks for your time.
Thank you for your time, and.
Yeah, we want to, we want you to be successful with it, we just, I just don't think we're there yet, and I think we'll get there.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if, you know, because last time, that was the feedback, you know, I brought that map and it showed it coming out here, and they said, let's table it, move it to the, you know, move it to the south, and that's what I did, so.
All right.
Admittedly, a little bit of time has expired.
Yeah.
And it's a new makeup here.
We've got five new commissioners.
Well, I appreciate what you all are doing. Appreciate you volunteering your time to come, you know, the things you did earlier were great, I, you know, I'm supporting all of that, so keep up the good work, and we'll be back. So hopefully next time it'll be easy, easier that we can, you know, because like Rodney was saying, the attorney was going crazy on it, and I'm the one, I'll end up paying the bill on it anyhow, so, and I don't want to rack up a bunch of legal fees either, so.
Sure.
All right.
All right, thanks a lot.
I'll try to get to my son's Little League baseball game.
All righty.
All right, y'all take care.
Thank you.
See you later.
I don't know if I could ask for one more thing, if we tabled it, since the public hearing was so long ago, I don't want to throw more wrinkles into this, but could we have another public hearing for this, since it was two years ago that they held one, since we tabled it, or is that out of procedure?
We can, we had that discussion with Attorney Dragni.
We can explore that deeper and see if, if that's something the commission wants. I think you're entitled to do so, but I don't know.
We can talk about that, I mean, we have to get closer to having more of a plan that we can even do that. But we'll talk to Attorney Dragni a little bit more. We did have some conversation about that very thing, since it had been a couple of years. I don't know if we're required to, but we may have the option to, if that's something that the commission desires.
I would though ask, you know, time is an essence, you know, I, we've got short seasons here to build homes and stuff, so I'd like to bring this before y'all next month, so me and Mike know about the publishing, so if we have to publish it, he'd have to know within the next few days.
But we'd have to have.
Otherwise, if we make that decision, so if I get to the next meeting now and I have everything perfect, and you bring up and say, hey, I want this published, now that's, puts me out another, what is, almost a month, it's three weeks.
And I'm not going to disprove it or anything because of that, but if we can fit one in, it'd be nice to have, so.
Yeah, so if you want them to, what's our cutoff date for this week to get on next month?
Plus, there'd be a public hearing required for the planned development conditionally used.
Oh, you're right, yeah, so that would take, yeah.
It'll be one.
You need that, yeah.
That's fine.
There'd be another public hearing besides that.
That's sufficient for me, so.
Yeah, so that'll open the door up for the group, the group portion of it.
Okay.
All right.
All right, sounds good.
See you later.
Take care.
Item number nine is the request by the City of Stoughton Public Works Department to construct a dumpster enclosure at Norris Park, which is at 630 Creedhaman Drive.
Materials are in your packet, fairly straightforward request. It's on a municipal site that requires site plan consideration by the Planning Commission.
All the persons, or.
Moved over.
Motion, sir. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bartlett, any discussion on that one? See none and all in favor of? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Item number 10 is discuss future meeting dates for proposed ordinance amendments to Section 78-517, the downtown design overlay district requirements. And this one here, we had talked at the end of the last special meeting about trying to set up a date where we can get together and continue that discussion, and I don't know if we have any proposed dates, or if you want us to send something out, or?
Today, Mayor Swadley suggested that the city attorney might be appropriate to have at that meeting. His availability is essentially nil in June, so if that's the case, you're looking at June, after July, after the week of July 4th, to include him. If you're looking at having a video slideshow or walking through some of the pictures on Google Earth or something, we can certainly do that here without having a tour. Peggy Varigan's availability sounds quite open essentially in June, so if you'd like to have her participate, then it would really just be trying to find a date that you would like to have such a meeting either in-house or as a tour.
So the idea came up that we do a tour, and then we kind of talked since then that we could do a virtual tour. It might be a little bit more efficient if we just go out and, and take photos, we do the Google Earth thing, and focus on a few property that have the examples of the characteristics that we're looking for, and maybe what some of the challenges would be to make changes to them ordinances. And we thought if we did it virtually, then we wouldn't have to be relying on weather, we could all meet here, and it might be a little bit more efficient use of time than walking up and down Main Street, which could take a while. But that's kind of up to the group. You guys up to another meeting in June? We can work to schedule it. Not everybody's here tonight, so we certainly have to reach out and try to get as many folks here as we can. Anybody going on any extended time off?
It sounds like a virtual meeting would be, or, you know, a virtual tour would be the most convenient and efficient way to do it, if that would give us enough of a scope or, you know, tackle everything that we want to look at.
I think it would. What we would probably do is try to connect with Peggy and come up with the examples of the ones that we want to focus on, and then try to put a narrative together, so as we're viewing it on the screen, we can describe what property it is and what's going on with that, and why it has the, the features that are outlined, and potentially, we may or may not want to keep in ordinance. That's kind of the general idea. You think that'll work?
Because all that would be pretty much Google Earth-able for the most part, except maybe the alleys, the backs of the buildings, that's what we're suggesting, yeah.
Yeah.
So I would think that would suffice.
Better than a whole group of us getting arrested for loitering.
So I think, I'm hearing that that might work, and we just got to come up with some potential dates, and we can either do that now or we can send something out. You guys have a preference?
I think send it out for me.
Yeah, send it out. Mondays weren't good for me, but.
Okay.
Send it out and see what. Right, have to look at June because of the timeframe, and then if we get into July, we have the 4th of July, and then that second week is full of meetings already.
Right.
Depends on the timeframe.
So that's what we'll do, is we'll take a look, and we'll, we'll look at some of the other meetings that are scheduled, and then we'll review when, when Mr. Robinson and Mr. Barman are available. And we have a gentleman back there that wants to participate.
I have a question, Your Honor, if that's okay.
Sure.
Gentlemen, Jordan Tilson, I own the building at 193 West Brooklyn Street. I know we kind of talked at the last Planning Commission meeting on June 5th. I was hoping that there would be a motion today to lift the moratorium just on that one location, so that I can start the process then to submit the paperwork to this commission for plans of future redesign. So as we talked about, that back porch is rotting very poorly. So, as we talked about, that back porch is rotting very poorly on there, and I feel that I have a halfway decent plan to make an improvement upon that, uh, in support of bringing more bodies and offices to the downtown area.
Sure. Uh, we don't have it on the agenda, so we can't take action tonight.
Yes.
It is one of the properties that, I know I've driven by multiple times, and we're having conversations about that property, that would certainly be one that we would include at that meeting, and we could certainly post at that meeting an opportunity to lift that moratorium if the commissions desire to do that at that point in time, so we can notify you of when we get that scheduled as well.
Wonderful.
All right?
Yeah, uh, trying to keep that going so that we can get plans to you guys as soon as possible, hopefully the July, I don't know what you were thinking of, either having that meeting this month, uh, so that we could get that.
That's what we're hoping for, if we can agree on a date where we can get a majority of us here.
Wonderful.
Okay?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks for coming in.
One other thing, that typically, very typically, the back of a building isn't the main issue, so you, you know, it would be a good idea, and if you had it ready, I would think that would, we, we might be able even start with approving something like that, if, if that's where that meeting goes.
Do you.
Am I, uh.
You want us to share, we have some, some conceptuals.
Mm-hmm.
That we can share in the meantime, is that all right, if we distribute those?
Yes, that's, I've been sharing with yourself, Your Honor, to make sure that you guys are on, uh, the whole planning process with that, uh, if I'm incorrect, Mr. Stacy, or Director Stacy, please let me know that I can't get that officially to any of you with all the surveys, uh, until the moratorium has been lifted, uh, which is why I'm looking for the votes to have that moratorium lifted on that property, so that I can, uh, have all the official paperwork to all of you as soon as possible.
Sure, but we can certainly send out the conceptual, so you can see, uh, what his proposed plan might look like, so, that's about all we can get into it tonight, though, since it's not on the agenda.
Understandable.
And we'll keep in touch.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet.
Gentlemen?
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll send out, um, some potential meeting dates, hopefully we can get a, a big enough group of us here, um, future agenda items, obviously there's going to be a few things that come back, is there anything else to add to it that anyone's aware of?
Could I just ask a question? Normally, since I haven't served on this kind of committee previously, um, do you normally ask at the beginning of the meeting if there are things that people want to bring up on, that are on the, on the, um, commission, the planned commission?
As far as?
Communications?
Yeah.
Like other committees?
Communications, because I was kind of waiting for that.
Oh.
I could be very brief, because I know we've all been here a while, but.
Yeah, go ahead, acknowledge as good a time as any, I guess.
All right, well, I didn't know how that might fit in, but, um, I just want to mention that I was, I was very surprised, and I guess disturbed somewhat, that, um, we didn't table the, um, the apartments, that the change in the apartment code, and, um, there were, you know, I felt like that was a major part of our city, um, those kinds of restrictions, and that it should have been looked at more carefully, and, um.
You're talking about the North Ridge?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and so, I just, uh, uh, wanted to express my disappointment that, um, we would make such a big change that had such an effect on people and on the city in the future, because we've approved such an apartment, and there's a couple of them over in Oregon, if you want to see them, they're 50% higher than the existing allowance we had, it was such a major change, and my disappointment was that we wouldn't at least give it more careful thought after all these years, before we simply, at one meeting, decided, okay, we'll, we'll allow apartment buildings, because that's going to allow apartment buildings elsewhere in the city also, because you will be, change of use, or, you know, that's going to apply as an example that we've allowed that, and so, I, I also would like to say that I was very disappointed, um, in particular, Matt Bellin gave an excellent explanation of why he was opposed to this for his neighbors, um, the amount of turnout by those neighbors, you know, they were here, they wanted to talk about it, and I felt that they, they kind of got swept aside, I'm not saying, I'm not here to argue again whether that should have been allowed or not, it was just the abruptness, and, uh, both by our, by the Plan Commission, and then by the council, that such a major change in the city was made, and that it happened so quickly, and, um, I was disappointed that we didn't have more respect for the several people that came to that meeting and spoke against it who live out there, and you know what that feels like to those people when they come, and they give their points of view, and they're very wrought up about it because they live there, and they were concerned about it, and we don't even hold it off for, you know, 30 days to, to take into account some of the things that they were talking about, so, I think we can be more responsive in terms of time and appreciation, both of the public, and be more careful, I know we want to be accounts, whoops, not on the council, we want to be a community that moves ahead, but I also think there's a danger in moving ahead without looking really carefully at the amount of change we are producing without, um, without listening very carefully and taking a little time to be sure it's the right thing to do for Stoughton as a city, so, I know it's like, I just.
I certainly understand, and really the unfortunate reality of that one is that was driven by a change in state law, which really took local control away from us, and we had to have a pretty good reason that would stand up in court to, to deny that, and even to delay it, uh, might have caused litigation issues for us, and one of the things that we have talked about as a future agenda item is the conditional use permit in our zoning codes, uh, which is a huge undertaking, um, and if that's something that this group wants to dive into, to try to, you know, give the city more of that local control back, we can certainly do that, um, it, it'll take some work, um, and I know the city attorney is already doing some research on what that might look like, and what some other municipalities are doing to try to address the law change, and really, it wasn't what, at least for me, it wasn't what I did or didn't want to do, it's really what we had to do, which is forced upon us by our state legislators, and to me, that was just as unfortunate as the outcome for those homeowners, the fact that the state of Wisconsin is telling us what we can and cannot do in our municipality, which I just think is wrong.
Well, and I know we don't want to get into this now, but I, I'm not sure that's correct, and I, I question the legal point of view that was put forth, we have a code, we have a building code, what, I, I seriously question that we couldn't enforce our own building code, that's not what the state did, we have a building code, now, we weren't being asked to change the code, we were being asked to give a conditional, um, acceptance or exception, and, uh, I, I've read that document two or three times, obviously not an attorney, but that doesn't seem to be saying you can enforce your own building code.
Oh.
And that seems to be what they were saying to us, if we do, we would be.
I, I, I know what our attorney said, and actually, I went to seminars, and I know what other attorneys said that basically had the same opinion as ours did, so, I, I think we were put in a bad spot, and it made us look, you know, like we didn't want to work with our constituents, and I couldn't tell you, from my personal point of view and, and others that serve, that's not why we serve, we serve to represent our constituents, and I feel that we were, our, our rights were taken away on that particular issue from the state, I don't know if you have something you want to add, Matt?
I just wanted to point out that, I know with the law change also, but it's not the first time this has been done, even in our district on Jackson Street, there's plenty of apartment buildings that are on single lots, and there's some that are more than 12 units, so this isn't.
No, it was 16 units, and, and there are none that, that are against the building code unless they were approved to be again, we didn't let people build.
They had to get a conditional use if that, I don't know if they were probably built before that was put in place in 2009 or whenever, but there are other units that are similar to this, and they don't detract from our neighborhood, that I believe, so, I think we did think this through, we've been talking about this for, I know you weren't on the council last year and on the commission, so, things like this have been talked about, so, I felt comfortable voting for it, so I just wanted to put that forward, we weren't just jumping out of the, jumping out of our seats for this, this was something that's been talked about, and we were kind of put in a bad spot with the law change, so.
But we can take that up as a future agenda item, and thanks for sharing that.
Do you want it as a future?
You want us to put that on there?
No, I, I just wanted to express the thought that.
Okay.
That we, I don't see any reason we can't enforce our own building code, and I don't see that the state legislature changed that, they may have said something other than that, like we can't have certain reasons for it, but that wasn't the issue, but anyway, I'm, I'm done, and I know it's, it's the end of the day, so.
Okay.
But, uh, that's all.
All right, so we need one more motion then?
Jurn.
All right, there's a motion, New Jurn, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, none opposed, thank you.
Thanks. I'll bring the zoning code book, or my colors, this is the one for over here, this one's yours.